Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I say...
Call the robe.
Commissioner Newton?
Here.
Commissioner Caster?
Yes.
Commissioner Burden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knopf?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. And Jeff has an announcement to make about the agenda, Lee.
Yes, I just wanted to make a quick notice that we had had the Bennett short-term setback reduction at the last meeting and I think some, we had gotten a few phone calls over the week about that case and it's been withdrawn, so if anyone's here about that, I just wanted to notify that that's been withdrawn, so that's why it's not one of the...
Alrighty, are there any amendments to the minutes?
Well, there's a major problem is that I did not nominate himself as vice chair, I nominated Joe as vice chair.
Okay.
And he was elected as vice chair.
Then I also want to make a correction on page three, down towards the end, you mentioned Chairman Lundie twice and it should be myself, and then in the second to the last paragraph on the second sentence in the Don Statney case, I think you want to say Statney owns the house at 755 North Ash Street.
Okay.
That's all the corrections I have, anybody else?
I had a correction on, under the tree removal ordinances on page five, it shows that I voted aye and I abstained on that vote.
Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes as revised.
A second.
Call the robe.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
I was not here.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knopf?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. This is a legislative public hearing regarding the consideration of OZO-19-01 Short-Term Rental Ordinance Amendment to City of Cannon Beach, Request for Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment, Revision of Municipal Code Chapter 17.77 Short-Term Rentals. The City of Cannon Beach is requesting zoning ordinance text amendments, revision of Municipal Code Chapter 17.77 Short-Term Rentals. The proposed amendments addresses short-term rental permit administrations, enforcement, and standards. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of the Municipal Code Section 17.86.070A. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any chairman, does any member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Okay, staff report?
And just wanted to get anyone to, there are still some public comments here, if anyone wants to pick up on that. Second off, this is my first legislative here in Cannon Beach and as a staff and I really want to thank everyone who has commented, we've had great input and we welcome that. This, of course, is a recommendation that will be made to the city council, it'll be a public hearing held at the city council as part of this process. So, we did get a late email that's also over there on the table, requesting that to hold this open to public record. We, that's not truly necessary since it will go to the public, this, your decision or your recommendation will go to them, so you can make a decision and I asked Jill about that and he was, he was affirming that decision himself.
So you're saying that we, we could forward this on to the city council tonight?
Sure. That's up to you, it's up to your discretion, you can, you can continue it, but since the public record remains open through the council, it'll only get to their public hearing.
Okay.
Just wanted to go ahead and let you know I did ask him that. And so for the staff report, I wanted to briefly kind of test people up that have it at the work session, but, and review a little bit of the staff report, kind of the history on this. So, short-term rentals have been around in Cannon Beach since the eighties, and you can see here the comprehensive plan language that speaks about that, and I'm going to go ahead and read that. "The city finds that transient occupancy of dwelling units constitutes a visitor-oriented commercial use in the city residential areas. In order to maintain the residential character and livability of its neighborhoods and to prevent the adverse effects of the transient occupancy of dwelling units on residential neighborhoods, it is necessary to limit and regulate the transient occupancy of dwelling units." So, from the very beginning, comprehensive plan, we have addressed regulation duties. And then that plays out in our zoning ordinance purpose, of course, and the three different categories that have we dealt with. And if you'll see, I pointed this out at the work session, we have not seen, at least as far as tracking and record, we've heard anecdotally that, you know, there's a big rise in short-term rentals and, you know, nationally there's a big rise in short-term rentals, but we're not seeing quite that play out, at least of the permitted ones within the city. And so one of the things I wanted to do was give you guys, and we had asked, or was asked of our staff, if we could just at least see the short-term rental helper that we got, the software package and the technology that we, the city got to do that. So, I wanted to do that, but before I do that, I wanted to also let everyone know that on our website here, okay, if you go to services and you go to planning, when you develop a planning, you'll see over here on the side, short-term rental. If you click that short-term rental button, you can see quite a, quite a lot of information on our short-term rental program. And so you'll see even those lucky winners of the lotto, and then down here, I wanted to point out that we have the application forms for each one, audit forms, that kind of information, but at least yearly, we also update our short-term rental map. And so you can actually look and see where five-year transit and vacation rentals are for each one of the parcels in the city, past lives in the city. And so, I at least want to let everyone know that we, you know, this is a great tool for everyone. And so, one of the next, when we do a workshop with the planning commissions here, in the future, probably next month or the following month, I also want to kind of give them, give everyone an understanding of what else is on here, that at least for short-term rental, that's, that's a real benefit. We, so, when we got this, the issues came up about, you know, is there too many short-term rentals in the city? We're seeing a growth in that. Well, we contracted to have SDR helper, cost us, I think, around $13,000 to get this package, and we wanted to see, hey, are we missing something there out there? Because we had heard there's this huge growth, but we're not really seeing that in the numbers. So, if you go into our SDR helper, what it does is, these are listings here, you'll see this new 62, so they just break Airbnb, I think, for the first time for us, and so they, they came across 62 listings. Now, these are listings, not necessarily permanent, right? And so, 396 are confirmed listings, and then they've got some that come up every month and this supposedly continuously do that, continuously updating, we have not seen that. We're, we're, we've only really seen maybe two or three where we think we've updated because we started this, and we started, I think, in November, December. And so, not found two, one outside the city that they're claiming, and we go back and forth, and I'll talk a little bit about how this rolled out here in a minute. But, as far as the tool goes, we can click on this, and we can look for maps of this, and we can zoom in, and we can identify, Big Brother is right there with us. And then, if we want, we've got these little dashboards, and they give you the dashboards, and you can see here, we're in green, which supposedly good for everything and, and so we've got compliant, non-compliant, exempt, and then these other categories for the license. And I can also go in here and I can type in, or find one by case number or by address. And so I'll give you a, just a rundown of what this looks like as far as records go. So, you get a little record, a little identifier for each record, you click in that permit number's record, and you can see everything from, you know, the licensing on it down to where it's, where it's licensed at, history of it, where it's mapped at, and then down here, you can actually click on these and see where they found these, and what, how they're being advertised on the website. One of the reasons I want to show you this is that this one, our HomeAway, what we've done is when they come up with a non-compliant one and we can test somebody, what this does is at least it's for this, we can then go into the records of each one of these and download all of those nice, we love things and all that. And so you've got, you know, hundreds of evidence that I have, and then so when the person then says, well, we've only been, you know, a couple friends have come over, it's not the way the site says. You know, we've got a little bit of evidence, yes. So, it is helping us do that, it's helping us track some of this stuff. Jill, no, is there anything else that I can do?
No.
Okay. But, I think, let me... And so, the history on this is, so back in November or so, they did the initial review, and they identified 23 properties as non-compliant at that time, but then after staff reviewed, after Jill, who knows a heck of a lot more than I do about a lot of these locations, she reviewed those and we ended up with three properties that we found were non-compliant, not permanent, and we went after them, and we got two of the three of them have, we've resolved those cases, and that totaled to about nine, around $90,000 in taxes and penalties. So, it's paying off at least for that first strike, okay? And, and I think it does help us internally to kind of least identify and know this, but I also wanted to point out that Jenny in the back there is our new code official, and she will also be able to be out there on the street helping us investigate, and so we've really got new tools that we're going to be able to, to get out there and look at. So, there were five to 10 properties that were wrongly addressed, there were five to 10 properties which we issued permits, not found by the SDR helper, so it's not perfect, though, we're going to be working with Jenny, with Jill, and with SDR helper. 62 were recently identified, that's a scrape, I'd say, with the Airbnb, and only one is a possible new violation, so, you know, it says, you know, they're not compliant or they're not confirmed or whatever, but really by looking through, we know that they're just kind of uncovering some of these already, so. Of the 94, 14-day rentals audited this year, we, only seven of them have violations.
Is all this available on the website? So, take up...
This will be, this will, yeah, I'm going to post this in the minutes tonight, you know, okay?
For Airbnb, who pays the taxes, the rental taxes? Is it Airbnb who pays them to the city as part of their rental agreement, or is the, is the homeowner? The homeowner?
I think it's the homeowner, yeah.
So Airbnb does charge for that?
Yeah, I, I'm not, you know, I'm the planner, I don't get to see anybody, so. Yeah, so, next up, so what I also wanted to say, the numbers, people ask me, okay, well, what is the percentage out there? So, this is census data, there's 18, approximately, well, 18, 12 units in Cannon Beach, 759 are occupied, 1,053 are vacant, 20 are rent, eight rented, not occupied, but that seasonal, 980 seasonal recreational or occasional use. So, to make it easy, this is what it looks like in a pie chart. Vacation, vacant housing is in green there, occupied housing, 41 percent. Break that down further by the numbers, you'll see that vacant is in seasonal recreational or occasional use, that's 54 percent of the homes, occupied 41 percent, and you add in those SDR numbers, so that's what it looks like, about 11 percent of our housing, okay? How does that compare after, I also want to point out, so, the difference between this one is that one over there, so 24 percent are owner-occupied housing units, 17.6 percent renter-occupied housing units. So, if you look at that short-term rental, owner-occupied, renter-occupied, and then that 43 percent are those second homes, third homes, fourth homes, the people just visiting, come when they need, right? Not renting, okay? How does that compare to other communities in the area? I don't have their SDR numbers, I could probably get that by the council's time, but this is how we shape up. You can see Manzanita has almost 75 percent, I can tell you compared to, I've worked in Idaho and the mountain communities, I've worked with Colorado, I've worked with Florida and Georgia. Once you get to that 75 percent mark, that's a dangerous mark because often you start losing businesses and things like that and it's balanced, so there are, you like to keep a balance of these things, and that's what, you look at, say, Astro Enterprises only has like a 40 percent, and it's, it's much less of the rentals than you would think, whereas...
Here, is this green as for rental, I can't see that?
Yeah, so the green is that seasonal recreational or occasional, right? So...
Gearhart just recently passed something to possibly outline short-term rentals.
Regulating.
You can see, so, I don't think Gearhart...
They can't add new.
So anyhow, these are the numbers, these are from census data, so it's available on here as well, I don't want to dwell on a lot of that, I'm, I'm happy to do more of this kind of stuff.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I caught the whole gist, at what point, there was, you said something about 75 percent, that becomes a dangerous position for a community, was that when you're, when you're unoccupied housing, is it 75 percent?
Yeah, yeah, that vacant season, which is what seasonal and all that is considered.
Rentals?
Yeah, yeah.
No.
No, no, not, not long-term.
No, no, short-term.
Short-term rentals in that area is in, all within what the census called the vacant area.
Okay, so you mean that those are seasonal?
Because they're seasonal or the recreational, not occupied.
Not occupied full-time and for rent?
Yeah, see, and so you'll see that kind of...
Is the anti-rent part of it?
Yeah. What's that now?
Okay, well, I'm trying to understand, the green represents not occupied full-time?
In this one right here, the bright green, okay, I do not have Manzanita's or Seaside or Gearhart's SDR number, okay? I didn't, you called them up and get those, I can do that by the city council, but what that would, this SDR would fall within that green area here, okay? So there's going to be a portion of that green area.
So we don't know what it is?
We, I don't know what it is for those three. I can tell you that Manzanita limited at 17 percent, 17 and a half percent, so it's only going to be 17 and a half percent of that green.
I guess what I'm trying to underst...
That's way different than that chart, that's a whole different, you know...
What do you mean, what's different?
Well, because, because the way that looks, that, we don't have a chart that tells us what percentage are short-term rentals.
Right here. Right there, 11 percent.
No, the comparison of these...
So that's the 14-day, the...
Yeah, so theirs is going to be 17 and a half, Manzanita's is 17 and a half, ours is 11.
Okay. 11 percent of our unoccupied...
Of your, no, of your housing units, I'm not saying that...
Total health.
Of your total housing units.
11 percent of our short-term rentals.
And so, you know, Manzanita's 17 and a half percent, so, and I'm saying that 11 percent, I think is, you know, as far as this goes, it's a very, you can see it's a fairly balanced compared to Manzanita or even, I think, a little bit of Seaside, but you can see Seaside has quite a bit long-term, I mean, long-term, which is, you know, that's, that's a pretty healthy long-term rental.
How can you say it's balanced, it's long-term rental, I mean, I don't...
I would like to see more long-term rentals, but I can just tell you from, I can just tell you from, and I can bring you them, is in all the resort communities, you will see, ours is fairly similar to most of us, I would say closer than even Seaside.
You mean portions are similar to other?
Yeah, yeah, it's fairly similar. I, you know, I think 11 percent in short-term rentals is not that much, it's about normal. So, and, you know, it goes with this, that's probably about the, about the normal rate. I worry if it gets too far down there.
So I don't understand why you were talking about some of the green being rented.
I don't understand what, oh, good question. See how this, I, I have our short-term rental numbers, right? So that is just part of that seasonal recreational or occasional use, right? See this chart? Okay? Now see, now I, when I go to this, I'm just subtracting that dark green segment that says 11 percent, and including that within the bright green. Did y'all not make that leap?
No, I guess I would, my leap would be to have it fixed as, as another color.
Well, I didn't do that, I mean, that's just saying 11 percent, that you, you know...
Because there's a big difference between, you know, second home, third homes or whatever, unoccupied, maybe somebody shows up sometime in something that's rented as a short-term rental.
Okay, so I want to go, I want to hold you on that number right there in that thought, okay? Because here's what we came up and did the math from short-term rental helper, and we did the audits. The average number of reservations per unit per year is 11.9, okay? Only three had over 20 reservations in the past year, okay? The average length of stay is 5.2 days. The average number of nights rented per year is 62. Average number of nights rented per month is 5.2. The average occupancy of rental units as listed is eight. Average cars per listing is 3.3, so if you did a estimate, that's about 39 cars per unit per year in the short-term rental category, okay, about enough.
Jeff, over what period of time was that survey taken?
Over the past year.
Including the location?
Yep.
I thought they went into place in September, or November?
Well, we do a yearly audit.
You do a yearly audit, and that based on the yearly audit, this is the, okay.
So, I wanted to kind of get what we have as facts, as numbers, this is why I want to do this out there. And so, we will track this and we will see how it grows, or if it grows, and do that for you guys, and we could, you know, keep you guys up to date, you know, likely quarterly or something like that and keep these records going, so you guys learn, and we can track this stuff and get feedback on that.
Can you give me the number again, how many short-term rentals are unoccupied?
190.
Does that include those with the five-year permit? 190.
So, so, 85, I don't remember what the number was, like 11 percent, so you're saying that 89 percent of the homes that are not occupied full-time are not for rent? Okay. On that pie chart?
Here, I think you need the pie.
I do need the pie.
Here's the pie, okay. So, I'll get up. The dark green is what we're looking, talking about tonight, the short-term rentals, 11 percent, dark...
Real tiny skinny?
No, that's a big...
It's the Subletage of the Army.
Yeah. Jackie Green.
Uh-oh, I know, so here... Can you read that, Don, please?
No, I can't read it.
That looks gray to me.
Okay, this says, that's the short-term rentals, this is dark green, that's the segment we're talking about tonight, which is just part of this, okay?
And what's this?
Joe was asking what this is. This is vacant, this is occupied.
I mean, occupied full-time.
From the census, okay?
Full-time occupied.
I can only talk from census, okay?
But that census...
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's what we claim to be occupying full-time, and that's what the census reports it at, in other words, when it looks at the data. So, this is owner-occupied, this is renter-occupied, okay? Full-time, right? So if I have a long-term rental, that's where I fall.
But this is based on the 2010?
2010, you're right, yeah. I, I don't have, we'll have good new numbers, which will help us soon, I think, I like, glad you pointed that out, but. And then, these are all the miscellaneous that don't really add up to much, but these are the numbers I look at right in here. And so, if I go to the next one, which is that one that compares, all you got to do, this is really on like one or two percent, so just add 11, so this is dark green right here in your mind right now, take here, okay? This is that light green segment, okay? Manzanita's going to be 17 percent, so it's going to go down to about here, that dark green in Manzanita. I don't know Seaside or Gearhart, I can call them and get that information for you, but I just, I did this today, so. So any other questions on that, I'd like to just move along, though.
So, so what's the problem?
That's a good point, and I'm going to get to that, I want to get to the point, that's, that's, because, because I, and then, and that, Joe, I think that is a perfect question, I, I couldn't have said it better, because I had the discussion with Jill today that what started this conversation, what, and from the city, the city council directed, from my understanding, directed you guys to look at these, this, and so, that's why they, they're the ones who wanted this, from my understanding. And so I can, I'm new here, so they can say, no, that's not true, but that is what I'm going to go with.
Can I just point out one thing, though? If you, those numbers would be totally different if you did it month by month, because the bulk of the rentals happens within a three or four...
But that's not going to change this number, that is the total unit. Now whether everyone's there... Now whether everyone's there at once, yes, that's gonna be-
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
But yeah, that, that's for these down here as well, right? So Lisa, what I'm saying, that will not change this chart at all.
The chart, the chart where you had the number of people, the, the ribbon chart that you put up there, that shows-
The average stay and-
Yeah.
Number of nights and that's it.
If you, if you squeeze that into three months, it would look a lot different.
That right there.
Because, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. If that was consolidated into three months, it would look a lot different than that looks.
And, and now that we know that everyone's concerned about our heat, right?
Yes.
We will do the math on that, you know what I'm saying? If, if I did, went to the trouble to do this for you now, I'm gonna be doing it for you and breaking it down and go check it for you next time and come back. But as far as getting back to Joe's main concern, I don't have the numbers to come to you and tell you that I really think it is a problem or that these are possible, right now. I don't. And I'm, I, I've, I've worked in many resort communities and I do not see what I've seen in the data as an issue right now, okay?
That's what resort communities refer to.
I've worked in some of them, uh, for almost ten years, but, and also worked with Colorado communities and Utah communities, so we've worked, we had Mountain County planters, which we met every year and talked exactly about these. And this is back, uh, now over twenty years ago. They've been concerned about the step of clean and, uh, and then I work in the coast of Georgia, so from Savannah all the way down to Jacksonville. And so that's what I've done. I've, resort communities, you kind of folks are my kind of, uh, people. I like them, I'm into them. And, uh, and so I, I, they're great concerns, they're, they're challenging, and I don't know if anyone's doing it right, but there's a lot of great models out there to look at and, and work with. So anyhow, back to the proposed change. So we were supposed to stay focused, is what my, what we, uh, stay focused, yeah. Okay?
What's the difference?
Proposed changes, one, two, and three. Award no more five-year permits and end the five-year permit program by allowing current five-year permits to expire. The second change was to change the restriction that allows one occupancy group for fourteen days, called the fourteen-day rule, to instead allow two occupancy groups per month. At the owner's option, number three, allow, at, and I want to emphasize that because we've gotten a lot of feedback and a lot of calls on this, this is not gonna be a mandatory thing, we're not forcing anyone's hand at this. At the owner's option, allow a self-managed short-term rental unit to defer penalties by changing to a professional manager. So I'm gonna address each one of those three things, okay? Uh, first off, this is what it looks like getting rid of that five-year unlimited permit. Uh, what's often called the lottery system. I think I've already explained, at least from my data, I don't see, I don't see a reason to deny, but this is how we do it. Number two, uh, any questions on number one I should ask first?
What do you mean, you don't see a reason for it?
I just don't see the numbers, at least from what I've studied, of a large growth in short-term rentals. I have also never, and I wanna qualify, have never been to a summer season.
So-
And, and you don't live next door to a short-term, a five-year permit.
I live, I live, well, I live in Ross Lane, which is, I'm surrounded by, and-
Right, I'm, I'm, you got the five years, I live, you know, you don't, you don't, it's a challenge.
I didn't know that there was gonna be questions, but I can search and see if I am. But I don't, I don't have that.
So, so one of the other aspects of, of this that I think is kind of left out of the conversation and out of the software as well, is what so many of the letters that we received talked about. And, and the real complaint in these letters, you know, everything is pretty much okay. They could twitch it here, twitch it there maybe, but the real problem are these day-trippers that come in and park up the streets and, you know, unplug up Hemlock and park their cars and go on the beach and-
So, you know, do I, at least-
And I guess the, you know, and it gets to my earlier question, what's the problem?
Yeah, so that's, okay, so first off, I would caution us to get, or at least you guys, to get into, uh, discussion right now. Keep it focused right now, any questions to me, if you have questions with the materials or what I bring back. And then when you got going discussion, then you can talk about that and ask me questions. But I would like at least to get through the changes being proposed and then, I think, then a token for you guys to kind of discuss these issues.
Okay, but then don't say things like, I don't see a problem.
Well, yes, I can, I, I give you my staff recommendation. That is what I'm getting paid to do, is to give you guys staff recommendations. My recommendation is no, I do not, uh, I do not, uh, as a staff, think that, I see growth enough in the short-term rental problem because I'm not seeing, I'm not telling you there's not a parking problem, but I'm not also tying those two together because I do not have the data or the evidence to show you that that is the cause of the parking issue.
And have not figured that out.
Right.
And that's critical.
It is, it is. But I'm giving you from my understanding of what I've studied, that, that, that's not the problem right now. So you can take that for what it's worth. You're, you're a, you're the person who gets to make the recommendations. You need to take my evidence and, just like you said, weigh it with all the other factors and especially what they say isn't in there, okay?
Could you tell me, please, how many are long-term five-year rentals out of the hundred and ninety-nine or have those permits?
Yeah, so the numbers, uh, Jill, you know, that's-
Thank you.
Okay, so number two, uh, is the fourteen-day, fourteen-day ru- uh, rule will change to what's called a monthly limited permit?
We have thirty-seven five-year permits.
Okay, thirty-seven five-year. And then, uh, the fourteen-day, as everyone knows, is, I think, at least administratively, has been discussed and being, um, kind of difficult to manage and difficult to tell people and, and, and all that. Uh, I wanted to kind of do a comparison of the current fourteen-day rental rules versus the monthly limit, the proposed monthly. Uh, and so I had that as a handout, but also here, you can see, so if someone were to come in that first Friday of the month, that fifth day, and, and rent through that week, departing on the eleventh, what we would do under the current is say, okay, you can't rent until the nineteenth, okay? And so they can rent anytime af- the nineteenth or after, but let's just say hypothetically, that second rival comes in there on the twenty-second and stays through the twenty-eighth, right? Then we also say, okay, you, that's two weeks from there down to the next one when they could rent, which would be the fifth on that next month. And that's how we calculate that fourteen-day rule now, okay? Now, let's compare that to the proposed. So under the proposed, if they came in on that first day, you can immediately, after they depart, and even if that day, they left that morning, they, you could do your second one again, okay? That's how the, the language that was proposing does. And so, uh, I've done a hypothetical one for that second one, so if that, somebody came in that last weekend and wanted to stay over that last weekend, they could rent, uh, immediately there from that. So it's a comparison on kind of the fourteen-day. Now, we've had, uh, in the public comment, people say, well, we've had a lot saying, you know, that they don't, uh, like the new rules and they're fine with the way that it works now, at least those operating SDRs are right now. But we've also had the question asked, well, could you just do twenty-four or thirty or whatever and just, you know, what, why does it have to be, you know, fourteen days or built along with monthly calendars? Uh, I think, at least my impression is, is that they did that to limit how many could be done in a month, right? And so from an administrative perspective, it would be no problem for us to do, okay, you can do twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty a month, a year, with as many as you want, and then limit it to say two or three a month, right? Whatever you wanted to say. And, you know, if you had, uh, so we can do it either way. In other words, administratively, it is no different for us to do, to set a number and get twenty-five for a year or whatever, do a twenty-four. Uh, the, what we heard back in the feedback is what, uh, with the management companies, I don't think they liked this new change is because it, they can get two, at least probably two more rentals during the summer month with his current fourteen-day rental language than if they switched to the new rental language. And that's the positive, that's three or four months in the summer. Whereas the rest, and the numbers, you know, show, they're not running, you know, even in the off-season period. And so that's, that's the discussion on that fourteen-day rule. And so then the number three is a profession, professional management. And so like I said, we've got a lot of feedback on that, kind of misunderstandings, I think, or at least they believe people are reading that as if they're man, it's gonna be mandatory, but, but it's not. And, uh, so the professional management is just for those that, okay, if they've gone into violation, they can, uh, kind of defer that. If they get seeked out a self-managed person, they seek out a professional management and then they get on board. And like I said, we had seven in this past year's audit, uh, that are in violation. Six of those seven are self-managed. So, um, a couple of proposed, what I call, technical changes. One of the issues we've had, and like I said, you know, the ones that, once we scraped the data with SDR helper and uncovered some of these, uh, the one that we found did not have a permit. And when we ran that by our city attorney, the issue is we can't revoke any license or permit if they don't have one. And so if it's a violation, uh, it's a bit of an issue. And so we wanted to add these two clauses in there to clarify that. And that's just to say that, hey, uh, you're under, uh, you're in violation and we can revoke, uh, you can't get a permit for two years is what we're trying to say, if you get caught doing that, you know, you know, because what they want to do, they got caught, they're gonna pay the taxes or the fees and penalties and then they want the next day to keep renting. And so, uh, those that are good, uh, citizens and have been working in this program for years, why shouldn't they have to go through the same violations and penalties as, uh, you know, somebody that's got caught, you know, with their hand in the chicken drawer? So that would be one technical change that I would propose to go along in this ordinance if you guys pass it. Uh, you know, the second one, and this revolves around just the definition section, okay? And this is really in the zoning code, is where we borrow the definitions for short-term rentals. And it all involves, you know, our, I pointed this out at the work session, this, this is the key phrase in the short-term rental. No person shall occupy, use, or operate, uh, nor negotiate, use, at least a rent, a dwelling unit. And that's the term, the definition term in any of those residential districts for short-term, and then it gives you the exceptions, right? And so, uh, you know, we've got, uh, really, that's why we limit them, uh, we don't allow accessory dwelling units to do short-term rental, uh, duplexes. And, and so the terms mean some things and, uh, and I've highlighted some of the different language that we use for that, you know? So accessory dwelling unit, you see that, we, uh, which is rented only for periods of thirty calendar days or more, uh, and that. And I just don't think, if you look at our duplex or dwelling units, you can see it says means a building or buildings. So what is the difference between an accessory dwelling unit and a dwel- and a duplex? We don't really have good language, it, it doesn't work. And so I propose, uh, the simple thing would be just to get rid of that buildings, but I would prefer if we just rework our definitions and, and make them clear. And so I, I just wanted to clarify the definitions around dwelling units. And so it's, I believe, a technical change, and so I just wanted to throw those out there that, uh, if you guys wanted to, you could also make a recommendation on making these technical changes. And so it's really a clarification of the violations and penalties to make those that are caught outside of the permitting, following the same, uh, problems, or the same, uh, violations and building as those that had been operating in those. And then, uh, just a redefinition. And so any other questions regarding this and then, um, you know, I would say we've had public hearings and then you guys can get into discussion and you can ask me more questions in discussion, but-
Okay. And there is some additional correspondence?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Okay.
I also, I was wondering, say, Darryl, uh, I also took this from your, um, from your notes there, but you'll see this one, it's from the building, uh, because you had asked, say, at the last one, and Bill, uh, Weissman had, or city attorney, uh, the question had been asked at the last work session regarding, is there special things we need to do from a commercial, kind of a commercial, uh, facility, uh, structure perspective and insurances and all that, if the city kind of maybe have more risk if we're doing that? And, and so Bill did some investigation and, you know, so these are, this is from the residential code. So in other words, what Bill wanted to let you guys know is that if you stay, uh, under the ten person or the other one is, the total number of the guests showing at seat sixteen and five guest rooms, if you stay under those numbers, you're still under the residential code. And so that's why we have in our application and on our things, you know, you can't go above ten. Okay? Then that triggers sprinklers and all that other stuff.
Somewhere in here, there's language that says twelve, but if, we can catch that later. But, yeah.
Okay. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report and listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan on municipal code, which the person testified believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanying by statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes the appeal based on that issue. based on that issue. Persons that would like to testify will please give their full name, mailing address, and if they're representing somebody, identify who they're representing. Is there anyone here that would like to testify regarding this issue?
Oh, no. You go first. I'll do this. I'll step up. I've been rewriting my notes, going through this, so, okay, just double through this a little bit. First of all, thank you for opening up the public hearing, and thank you for your oversight, because it has changed since the last time I saw it.
Okay, identify...
I'm Elizabeth Sweeney. I'm, I'm at P.O. Box 215, Cannon Beach, and I'm representing myself as Cannon Beach Property and Owners. You're examining the proposed changes to your next governing short-term rentals. The area is currently under concern, have immense impact to the viability of short-term rental business in Cannon Beach. Interestingly enough, this entire discussion, kind of those were something we said earlier, this entire discussion comes forward due to the whims of one city councilor, who has detested short-term rental use in Cannon Beach since moving to the area. Many inaccurate impressions have been swirling around, but had little or no basis in fact. The lottery was established with reasonable understanding of what happens when rentals are eliminated. It was conceived as a way to continue legal rentals while hopefully eliminating underground rentals. They understood that the unenforceable ordinance was not in the best interest of our community, and it's a relief valve. It's the hope of every homeowner that rents under the fourteen-day criteria, that eventually their name will get picked, it's the lot, available. Please do not recommend the closing of the lottery program, although I have one thing that could approve it, and that is, if all the people that are listed in the lottery program have a current fourteen-day license permit, because they don't, it's not required at this time. Next, we want to, regarding the fourteen-day rule, I think the concept is worthwhile, but unfortunately, as proposed, it will create more problems than it solves, especially for us, of us who do formal management. Currently, the summer months are fully booked. We're able to create blocks in our calendars to facilitate the management and maintain the city rules. Summer's not an issue here, as far as that's concerned, because it's easy for us to block it and not go into any violations. Off-season's the issue, and the reason this whole thing came up is because of the off-season, we had events back-to-back that we could rent for one, but not for the other. And it's like, the city's putting money into events to create off-season business, but we couldn't be supported, because we couldn't rent the houses. The city intention has been to encourage off-season business. The new rule would require more blocking than already exists to keep everything legal. Turns out, to be counterintuitive to the desired outcome. We have, there's so little ways for us to block efficiently for the new rule, that I've seen in the way, in the off-season, that allows for people, we're Airbnb, you know, or to book online with our website, the calendar is open, or it's blocked. If it, you know, we don't have an option on that, we have to maintain strict rules, and so therefore, we can't block it in ways to allow two rentals in a month, without opening the whole month. And, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a, it's kind of a conundrum of how we're gonna manage that. And so, it's kind of counterproductive for that off-season maintenance. There's gotta be other ways to do it. If simpler plan that is easy to manage cannot be designed, it's probably best to just leave it alone until such a plan can be devised. Many houses kind of go from short-term rental market, lives change, homes are sold, kids grow up, family members die. This causes churning in our market, but overall, the numbers have remained flat for the last few years. Cannon Beach property values are the highest in the state most years. Families have been, have generational homes, they work hard to keep their legacy, and often find it necessary to rent their homes in order to keep the taxes paid and the houses maintained. Families who intend to ultimately move here full-time need a rent loan, because for the same reason. Short-term rental income does not support overhead on a Cannon Beach home. It will provide cash flow to take care of the home, but certainly not carry a mortgage. Even though we are some of the most consistently expensive rental homes in the Northwest, rental income will not cover mortgage overhead. It just doesn't. Second homeowners pay tax, pay proper taxes, and do so without having the opportunity to vote in this community. Those who rent also pay transient room tax to the city, state, and who knows, maybe the county to force them along. These homeowners and the rental guests that use their homes are valuable assets to this They decorate their homes from the shops and galleries and the town, and they can be, they use the restaurants, they go to the coaster theater, they go to the art association, they are participating in this community. Many of these homeowners are also working on committees here, whether it's in the city, in fact, there are some city committees that have homeowners that are also vacation rental owners. And, they're participating, it's not like they're dead weight in this community. The renters also, they're gonna volunteer at A-Trap, they're out picking up trash on the beach, they're going to our shops, they're going to the galleries, they're buying things while they're here. They're not here for an afternoon, they're here for a couple of nights or a week, but while they're here, they call Cannon Beach home, and they often book for their returns before they leave. That's how dedicated they are to this community. We're considering a whopper of a bond issue still here in this community, and why would the city want to reduce an income stream that contributes to room tax income that largely supports the budget? We're a small proportion of that, but we are an income stream, we're not hotels. I often hear that the short-term rentals are a commercial application in a residential neighborhood. I don't know about your neighborhood, but mine has home-based businesses that pay for business license to do business, which creates parking and traffic. They do not pay additional taxes to the city for that privilege, but they are commercially used in residential neighborhoods. I live in Toldana. I have full-time rentals, short-term rentals, second homes, and full-time residents in my immediate neighborhood. The full-time rental that used to be across the lane from me had a renter that frequently paraded around in the butt. Yeah. Nothing you can do about it, just so you know. That property's now a short-term rental, and I have no problems. I have someone I can call if I do, it's the police, or the manager of the property. If I didn't get a quick call to the professional property manager that managed it, they would take care of the problem. The former homeowner, the often-rude renter, didn't care, he didn't care, it was rented, he wasn't here, it's been better to him. I have a full-time neighbor across Hemlock, which is roughly a hundred and feet, fifty feet from the edge of my property, and he hauls out a tile saw and decibel lever, decibel levers, over seventy decibels. I can't work in the garden, in fact, it's difficult to stay in my home, the noise is so loud, and it's damaging to my ears. I talked with the police department, but unfortunately, nothing is written in the building codes to protect me and the quiet enjoyment of my home and garden. There's lots of issues out there. Parking is an issue, I mean, we all have big issues. Short-term rental is not one. This is not one. We have, we have the ability to lease these, the rentals, and it's been done very well for a long time. So, one of the intended consequences of tighter, tighter ordinance is that it may or may not be enforceable. There is not a measurable way to determine what indicates success, from what I see so far. There's much more that can say about these issues, and I remain available for an informed conversation if anyone has interest to learn more. The current ordinances, while not perfect, work. There's no adverse to or can't be affected this community at large, and in fact, it will actually change and be detrimental, changes will actually be detrimental to the city income and to the nature of our neighborhoods, because these people love our homes. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, is it okay to ask for a clarifying question at this time?
Sure. Ms. Sweeney, I have a question for you. You mentioned that blocking during the summer wasn't an issue?
Yeah.
Is that true for all three permit types?
Yeah.
It's true for all three?
Yeah, it is.
And is it because, and I'm making an assumption here, I don't know, but I'm trying to learn, is it because you have longer stays during the summer than you do...
You have required stays.
You have required stays. And what, what's a required stay at your company?
Seven-night minimum.
Seven-night minimum. And in the winter months, that's not required?
Right.
You can't get that?
There's rare person that would come down to seven nights in the winter.
Sure, I understand.
There, there are properties in town that have less than seven-night stays, there's motel units that are managed by companies, and they are less than seven-night stays, but for the most part, seven-night stays.
So your minimum is seven. What during the summer is your average stay?
My average stay?
Is it seven days, is it fourteen days? What do people stay?
No, it's probably closer to seven days.
Is it seven?
Between six and seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address?
Good evening. First of all, my name is Tom Fulmer, and my address is forty-one eighty-five Southwest Eighty-third in Portland. Did you read my birthdate and my blood type?
We'll see.
No, just your height.
Well, you know, I'm sixty-four years old, and I'm shrinking.
By much? Daily?
I'm gonna go there. So, I am representing my family. I, my wife and I are one-third owners of what's known as Haystack Highways, and we have been legal and compliant renters since literally day one, when short-term rentals became available. I want, I have a few facts, but there's a lot of facts, and really, what I want to talk about is, we feel like we're residents. We are generations here in Cannon Beach. My wife's parents bought this home sixty years ago. I have photos of fifty of us on the bluff for the annual Spielunker party, the Dixons, the Frenches, the Knutsons, and it goes on and on and on. So when this came up about these proposed changes, we, there was a lot of, and there is a lot of anxiety, that these potential changes would become enacted. So, I want to share a couple of things with you. First and foremost, I want to say, everything, I think, should be left alone, as is. It's been extremely successful. We've been in the fourteen-day program for thirty years, and when we got the short-term rental lottery on September of two thousand seventeen, we had a party. At least among our family. And, a significant reason for that is, we've applied over and over, and it's a lottery. So when we got it, the news was great. So we really asked that you retain the lottery system. So, you know, we, it dramatically increased our ability to rent, which we've been doing, and really, it resulted in a two-hundred-and-fifty percent increase in room tax revenue to Cannon Beach in just fifteen months. So that's pretty significant. So we asked, we asked that you retain the lottery system. I've been the one that has been, I think I missed the family meeting, so that's why I'm here, to talk about who we are and what we do. You know, I looked at everything in the SDR Helper, and I really want to applaud you for, for contracting SDR Helper, because this community is one of probably millions that have a lot of unlicensed, under-the-radar rentals of homes. The one-hundred-and-ninety-two of us that have licenses and permits, we follow the rules, and we follow the regulations. And to see some of those numbers, and to see what I've seen, there's a significant amount of energy, I feel, we feel, that the city and the staff should be put into mailing those people. And when you showed me that number of ninety thousand dollars from, I think it was just two, we'll start multiplying that out, and that's some serious revenue for the city of Cannon Beach. The point is, we feel that the existing regulations are just fine, and those of us that rent legally and have permits are doing so, and generating a lot of income. We come here as often as we can. It's my wife, and myself, her sister, and husband, and brother, and wife. And, you know, there was a, I found an interesting article, the, the Daily Astoria had an article just in October, and it said, "While Cannon Beach short-term rental permits remains flat," because they do, "city lodging tax revenue from vacation rentals jumped from about two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars in two thousand twelve to four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars in two thousand seventeen." And that's with the same number of rentals. So for those of us that are legal and licensed and permitted, we're contributing some significant revenue to the community, and at the same time, we don't come from wealthy families, we have to rent. Our property taxes are twelve thousand dollars, just for the taxes, the maintenance, the repairs, the upkeep. The home that we rent is our home, and so, we are here as often as we can, but we also need the income to be able to literally keep our home. It's pretty simple. We also pay sixty-five hundred dollars in room taxes, and another fourteen hundred dollars in state taxes, just last year, from our home. And, you know, it, the short-term, the SDR that you showed, it said, "Some include allowing property owners to earn income by renting out their homes and unused spaces as well," that's what we do, "but offering tourists an experience that is more unique, and among others, driving visitors to places not conventionally accessible for tourists." To some extent, that's the case here in Cannon Beach. This fact that I found was really revealing, this was from the Oregon Tourism Commission just last year. It said, "On the North Oregon coast alone, visitor spending on accommodations increased from a hundred-and-ninety million to a hundred-and-ninety-seven million dollars in one year." That's just Klatsap County. And overall, room rates increased four-point-four percent during that same period of time. This one was really striking to me. Part of the stagnation of, well, let me back up, between two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, bookings for hotels and rentals for the entire coast actually dropped one-point-three percent. And on the North Coast, Klatsap and Tillamook Counties, it dropped one-point-seven percent. This is according to the Oregon Tourism Commission. And then, they say, "Part of the stagnation may just be a sign, new lodging is not being built to match growth," and this is a quote, "with many small towns like Cannon Beach already built out. Private home vacation rentals in Cannon Beach are vital to tourism and economic growth." So, bottom line is, we have a lot of respect for what the city and the county commissioners do, the city commissioner, the planning commissioner. I want to read you, because when I, when my wife and I inherited the homes, when her folks passed away within a year of each other in the mid-eighties, we were early, in our thirties, just starting, didn't have our kids yet, and here we have this property that really was a liability. We didn't get handed a big six- or seven-figure check, we got property in Cannon Beach. And we have taken generations to protect it, to protect the property, to know our neighbors, and to really be compliant with all the rules and regulations. So, now, I have a twenty-six-year-old daughter and a thirty-year-old son, Colleen and Bob, their kids are actually in their early forties, Mike and Mary have two kids, we each have two, and they're about the same age. We're already looking to a transition to them, because we found out we're not going to be here forever, although we'd like to be. So, I want to read you the... So I want to read you this, and it's in the public testimony. My daughter, God bless her, she's twenty-six, here's what she wrote to you, to the planning commissioners. "I'm writing this email to voice my concerns over the new rental proposals in Cannon Beach. My family has owned a home off Gagona Avenue," and she even said, "even when it was called Gokona for decades. I grew up on the coast, going to the Fourth of July Parade every year as a child, celebrating life milestones such as birthdays, Christmases, and weddings. I've been so blessed to be a part of the Cannon Beach family, and the only way that has been possible is because of rentals. Our family cannot afford our home without them. Not only could we lose our beloved home," which is true, "but a huge part of our lives and hearts. Tourism is not only important for the economy, but for helping families like us, local families. We are not strangers. We are not strangers, and we hope you aren't trying to push families like us out of town. I hope you consider who these rental laws affect. We absolutely love Cannon Beach, and I hope to raise my future children," I kind of had a shiver on that. "And I hope to raise my future children playing in front of Haystack Rock, skimboarding, drinking hot Coke open, sleepy monk, eating taffy from Bruce's Candy Kitchen, enjoying pastries from the Lazy Susan Cafe. Please don't push us out." That's my daughter. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to address us?
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Joyce Simpson. Our home is at eighteen forty-eight Pacific Avenue. My address is P.O. Box five-three-three, Honolulu, Hawaii. As you can hear, my primary residence is actually in Honolulu. My husband and I have lived there for forty-seven years. Our daughter now lives in Portland. And we found Cannon Beach thanks to her. We, a little bit like you were talking about, wanted a place, and I met my mother when she passed away, that we would find a place where we could gather as a family. And Cannon Beach is it. A very, very special place to us and a lot of other people who live around us. Our home happens to be on probably the busiest dead-end street in Cannon Beach. We have over two hundred cars coming through there in the summer every day. We talked to hundreds of tourists, because we are between the two access points right down to Haystack Rock. People are so grateful that they're able to come here. The day trippers, which I know, cause parking problems and other things, and people who stay. They love the place, they love being able to come here, they love the fact that actually one of the governors of Oregon made the access to all public beaches in Oregon possible. And it's important that that gift be protected for the people of Oregon as well as the rest of the country and the world for that matter. I came here today specifically to hear about the reasons for the rule changes. We were lucky enough on Lakeview Beach, actually got the five-year golden ticket within the first year of when we bought our home. We spent a lot of money on that remodeling it with local contractors, subcontractors, suppliers, because this was going to be our home. My husband and I hope to retire here in a few years. We won the golden ticket, much to our surprise. And said, "Okay, let's try it." We have virtually a brand-new home on the inside. It is our home, and we are very, very protective of it. We have been renting it now for about two and a half years and have nothing but great experiences. Very considerate guests. People who do love coming here with their families. We have a four-bedroom, four-bathroom, and almost, and our limit is eight people, with three cars. All three cars are unpriced. We talk to and get feedback from those people who come here and tell us what an amazing place this is and how they will come back for additional family gathering, which is exactly what Wendy said. They book immediately. Where we started with probably twenty stays in our first year, we'll probably be at forty stays this year. We do have minimums of three days, five days in the summer. We now are finding that more and more people are coming back multiple times a year. These are people who live in Oregon, up in Seattle, down in Bend, who want to come to the coast, and is year-round. We are very, very concerned about the changes and also recommend that no changes be made. We only have two and a half years left on our permit, and we will be out of that. It's not important for us, but it is important for the community. We know, having lived in a tourist town for forty-seven years, I live three miles from Lakeview Beach. It's two miles of beach with this year estimated ten million visitors. You learn that the people who are tourists actually are good people. They're not here to ruin anything. They're not here to make your day bad. They're here because they spent all the money they have to be able to go there and see that place. And I am always surprised when somebody says, "Oh, those tourists." Because without them, we wouldn't be living there. And without them here, we wouldn't be living here. This is an incredible place that you all have here and an incredible gift for everyone. It's very important, I believe, to be able to share when you have a gift. And that's what this is. What we've also done, besides spending a lot of money on renovations and stuff like that, is we pay about fourteen thousand dollars a year in property taxes. And I believe this last year, we were somewhere in ten to fifteen thousand dollars, as Jill can confirm, in terms of fees to the city for our transient rentals. That's a lot, when I hear the number of dollars that you're bringing in. That's a big percentage from one house. We've never had a complaint from any of our neighbors. We have an amazing management team, who if there is a problem, people call. I've talked to all my neighbors. If you have a problem with anybody, call me, here's my cellphone, twenty-four-seven, or call our property managers. I believe everyone who has a permit is responsible. I am concerned about those who don't have permits, because they clearly have chosen that the law doesn't apply to them. And I believe that enforcement, and I'm really glad as well that you have contacted the software, that enforcement of the illegal transient rentals is far more important than changing the current rules. Whereas Joe said, I don't see a problem. We have twenty thousand illegal rentals in Honolulu. Twenty thousand. And I have a neighbor, who is a new neighbor, just moved in, bought their home six months ago. They're on VRBO. Every day I do, like you, Lisa, I have a new visitor next door. But I've talked to that neighbor, and I've said, "Please, this is a residential neighborhood. Please think about us." And what they do is, they talk to their people. They don't bother us. Their car comes and goes, the people come and go, but they don't bother us. They're good people. So what I hope with this, and I hope to be able to come to the city council meeting, although it's not as easy for me, that you maintain current rules as they relate to long-term or short-term rentals. I will also tell you that in Honolulu, we have a huge affordable housing problem. I see Cannon Beach as having that as well. I worry about the people that we have working for us who can't live close, who have to drive from another place. And I would love to see, and this may not be the place, but to see new rules to encourage people to build affordable houses. Because it is a need. It's a need in this community. But I will also tell you that most of the people that I know who have short-term rental permits here will not turn their home into long-term rentals. It's their home. They're going to come. They're going to come on a regular basis, as I do. We come five, six times a year, and we spend a couple of weeks here. So we're not going to be able to rent our house up for long-term rentals. I would love to see the city do other things to be able to promote long-term affordable rentals. And I think if you do it correctly, that you can get people, probably lots of the people here, to contribute. Because that's an important piece of making a viable community. So in closing, I want to thank you for your time. I want to say that I hope that we keep the rules as they are. This is a thriving and beautiful community. It has incredible people, it has incredible scenery, and it's a place we should be able to share.
Thank you. I want to remind you all that we received eighteen letters, and that if you're speaking and you've written a letter, could you please summarize your presentation? Are there any others that would like to speak?
Thank you for considering these rule changes. I'm Sharon Amber. I live at twenty-four thirty-one South Hemlock. I've been here for thirty-five years, full-time, one-on-one Cannon Beach worker. And I'm kind of sitting on the fence with some of these things. I would like to relate my experiences, since I was here, oh, what was it, twenty-five years ago or something, city council, maybe thirty years ago, they decided not to enforce the short-term rental policy. And, oh my gosh, it changed everything drastically. I had neighbors, I lived in a community, I had people around me who rented summer homes and some, you know, they had pretty, um, creative arrangements sometimes. Sometimes they would have to leave and go stay with their friends two weeks a year when the owners came back and stayed. But I had mostly around me, there was a neighborhood. I have half a neighborhood in there. I have two people now, three people now that are full-time right around me, and I'm just surrounded by short-term rentals. And now, if I am actually along the list for this lottery thing, I think, I know, but I think that there's a quality of life issue here too. And I'm not sure I like it. A hundred and fifty homes, how many of those would be long-term rentals?
None of them.
Maybe, maybe not.
Audience left Sharon finish.
Anyway, we do need more long-term rentals for the workers here. That's the biggest problem. That the biggest challenge for business owners is finding people that actually have a place to live. So, you know, consider this carefully, look at all sides. There are other views. There are. I have a friend who lives next to a short-term rental, whose firewood disappears all the time. There's not a motel office that he can go to saying, you know, "Your guests are taking their firewood." You know? I think that the owners of the short-term rentals in my neighborhood are pretty, you know, they're pretty responsible, and yet they're not there. They're not there to see that there are seventeen cars parked on my street, and my friends can't even come and park there because there's somebody having a waiting next door, you know? And this happens frequently. So there are problems. I think that the people who have spoken are obviously very responsible, and so, you know, I'm not saying that it happens to everyone, but there are problems. And I would like to see more enforcement of the people who don't even have a permit of any kind. I think that being able to rent your house out once every two weeks is reasonable, it's always been on the books here, and it helps people who are retiring hold on to their homes, it helps people with large repair bills get the money for those repairs. I think it's, you know, it's important to use unused space. Now that I'm mostly an empty nest, I think that I want to use my space to share with the community or in some fashion. So I also think that the two-week periods every month makes a lot of sense to me. I don't know why it wouldn't make sense, but other ways seem so complicated. It seems simple, maybe I'm missing that thing, maybe. I just wanted to give everyone a different point of view than has been expressed so far. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak?
I'll be very brief. My wife has dinner with me.
Your address first, please.
My name's Mike Clartson. My home address is three-four-zero-four Southeast Harold Court in Portland. And I represent five families that own a property at one-thirty-nine Elliott Way, just a couple blocks from here, also known as Sea Mines. And we, you know, it's funny to hear our property referred to as vacant, because somebody from one of those families is there almost all the time. But we do have the short-term rental permit, and we do rent out, and we are happy clients of Cannon Beach Property Management. Most of the rentals are during the summer. And I don't know if you noticed, but Yogi Berra used to come to Cannon Beach during the summer, but he said, "Nobody goes there anymore because it's too crowded." And, you know, when we are here, and I've never been here for Sandcastle Weekend, but I've been here for summer and late spring weekends, and, you know, it's hard to park by Elliott. But for our rental purposes, you know, all our parking is off-street, and we've always had good clients, no major problems. Some kids jumped on the bed a couple of years ago and broke a slat, but that was only major damage. But we're all retired or near-retired folks. One of the families has actually built the house, and I helped a little bit with my limited carpenter skills. But we really rely on that income from the short-term rentals to pay property taxes, the utilities, and the upkeep of the house. And when we're down here, we certainly spend a fair amount at the grocery store, and the coffee shop, and the hardware pub, and all the places around town. So I'm kind of in agreement with Mr. Burnt over there. I'm not sure what the major problem is that needs to be fixed by a major overhaul of these rules.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Tracy McGill, and my mailing address is P.O. Box one-seven-five-one, Bend, Oregon nine-seven-seven-oh-nine. And in nineteen ninety-three, my family moved to Cannon Beach and bought our house at three-oh-seven Yukon when our children were three and one. And we've been a part of this community since then and have had businesses in town, raised our children in town. our children in town. Our kids moved away. They became adults, and one lives in Miami and one lives in LA. And we were torn about what our future lies. We moved to Bend, um, we had a large home that we remodeled down to the exterior in the late nineties, and we were torn. We didn't know whether we wanted to retire back here, what we wanted to do. I put our name in the lottery in the mid-two thousands and a couple of years ago, and we had started vacation renting it part-time when we were here part-time, and in Bend part-time. When we were gone, we would vacation rent it. When we were here, we lived in it. We won the lottery, and it has been, we've been using it for the last couple of years as a short-term lottery property. And I manage it myself, I have a local representative, and on local housekeeping team, they're fabulous. But I've had every person that I've met to. I run a VRVO side, they know it's my home, they thank me for coming to their home, to my home and getting to spend the time with them. I typically get multi-generational families. I've had absolutely no problem with the house or with the neighbors. And I live in a residential area, there are no other short-term rentals around me, they're all either owner-occupied or vacant, um, second homes that are occasionally occupied. In the nineties, I had a children's store in Cannon Beach, and what I learned then was that there were a whole lot of part-time locals. And they didn't, some of them owned property and some of them didn't, but they came often and they felt like Cannon Beach was their home. And that's the people I'm renting to now, are those people, and they're kids, and they come, and it's like, "Thank you so much for letting us have this experience." And I think it makes our town stronger, not weaker. And there may be a few little problems, and there's going to be glitches, and our current structure and the codes address that, and if they're enforced properly, they have the resolution for that. But to change something that's not, in my opinion, broken, overdoing other issues that are important. Traffic is a problem. Long-term housing is a problem, and for a while, we owned a duplex in this town. And long-term housing is a problem, but it's not going to be solved by my big four-bedroom house, because the only people that could rent it, I could be renting it to five or six adults in my house, they're going to be a lot harder on the house, there're going to be a lot more traffic, and there's going to be parties. And I dare say, probably, my neighbors are much happier having my house be a long-term rental than they were at the time that I had two teenagers and all their friends. So, I, I just want to mirror most of the comments today that, "Thank you for addressing it, but I strongly urge you to allow the program to work as it is." Thank you.
Does anybody else like to make a presentation?
My name's Pete Prail, I have properties one seven one East of Sidney. I'll keep my comments pretty short. I'm a scientist, so, uh, by training, so I really enjoyed Jeff's presentation materials. They were fascinating. I think it told a clear story, that the proposed changes here look to be a solution in search of profit. Ten percent, eleven percent, uh, short-term rentals, I just don't see that there's a real issue here that needs to be addressed. So I would just echo the other comments, that I think the program can stay as it is. It could be tweaked, it could be improved, uh, but I don't think that the proposed changes are the way to, to make improvements to the system.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Jan, Secret Woman, Pier Box Seven Seven Eight, I don't think this is Jan. I just wanted to say that, um, I would like to ask that the record be kept open, and my understanding of coming to these meetings for basically thirty years that I've lived here, uh, I think the intention of asking for the meeting to be kept open is that you guys do not vote until the meeting is kept open. So you wouldn't vote tonight, in other words, and I don't understand, uh, what we were trying to say, that, um, Phil, if I was going to say that it was open...
They, they can still, they're only a recommending body, okay, this is a legislative act, right? And so, if they feel they have all the information they need to make a decision or a recommendation, they can do that. And so, the record is still open when it goes, but there's another public hearing that will be held at City Council level. So they will say, the City Council in their package gets every key that's collected here, and then if that person missed this hearing, they still have a chance to say what they want to say, and the, just, I just did the planning commission to say, "The, the council, this is our recommendation." Well, they can have their say as well.
But they don't get to have their say to the planning commission, which is what they're wanting.
And that is up to them to make that...
What they're asking for.
And they get to make that, that call.
Yeah, because I've never, ever, and I come to these meetings very often, I have never, ever heard that interpretation.
I haven't either. I can't imagine why you'd expect to say...
Yes, this might be, it's okay, I might be able to address some of this?
Go ahead.
So, specifically hearing that the planning commission holds are quasi-judicial hearings. And if it's a quasi-judicial hearing, if someone requests an opportunity to leave the record open or continue the public hearing, the planning commission is required to grant that. That's in RS One Nine Seven Seven Six Three. This is a legislative hearing, and that requirement to leave the record open or continue doesn't apply in a legislative hearing. Right now, the, the, the record, the staff report is before the planning commission. The planning commission held a hearing, there's no indication that the notice was procedurally effective, just that someone didn't hear about it until, uh, recently. And in that circumstance, the, the planning commission does not have to continue it, they can if they want to, but they don't have to continue it.
And were they asking to have it just written, open, to keep the written part
If I recall the request correctly, they asked, they wanted an opportunity to address the planning commission, and I believe that was in person. There's certainly no reason, you know, because the City Council will be holding a public hearing, they submit whatever written material they would like.
But, Phil, why would you expect that the planning commission would want to make a recommendation without hearing from the full community? Why would you even, why would we even do that without, you know, hearing from everyone who wants to speak? I don't understand that.
I, I guess the thinking is, you know, was there an adequate opportunity for everybody to address people? You know, there's a fear, and I'm not saying this is what's occurring here, but the fear is that the planning commission holds its hearing, and somebody says, "I want an opportunity to address the planning commission," so they go, continue it to the next meeting, and at that meeting, someone else says, "I'd like an opportunity to address the planning commission," and gets continued again. And so it's not that you don't want to hear all the information, it's that was there an adequate opportunity for people to address the planning commission? If that's the case, then, you know, should every, should the process be slowed down because someone, you know, whether inadvertently or not, wasn't aware of the process?
And we don't know what that, what that reason was that they didn't get to come? Do we know the reason?
No, I don't know.
A couple people said they just couldn't make this meeting.
Right.
Okay.
And that's what we're, that's what we're hearing.
But they submitted letters.
No, no.
No?
They did not.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, I, I think what is, what it says is that, if you're a planning commission, you're really a recommending body, if, if you feel you have enough information to make your, uh, recommendation, it's not whether it's open or closed, it's that they'll get, and everyone will get another chance at this next round. So, you know, do you have the information to make it, you know, I, I don't know, that is up to you to decide.
Well, I guess it depends on how seriously you take your responsibility.
Or how, how you interpret your responsibility. It's all a part of that.
Okay, so that was one question, and I would like to ask that the, uh, hearing be kept open for the planning commission, because I think that the impact on our community of these, um, these changes, while they're not doing away with short-term rentals at all, uh, as I understand it, they would be tweaking certain things that would possibly make a big difference as far as livability in the city in the summertime for the residents. And that's what concerns me. I know that people that have these short-term rentals are, for the most part, very responsible, and I know the people that own the businesses that coordinate them, I know, I know they're very responsible people. But I do need to say that, as a person who's lived here for over thirty years now, I agree with Sharon Amber, who said that, um, when we really started getting more and more short-term rentals in the summer, the neighborhoods were significantly changed. And I've talked, especially with people in the Tolivanna area, um, older people who had very viable neighborhoods when they were there before the short-term rentals really took over so much, and that now, some of the people, they don't even have any neighbors. I live in the North End, and, um, I have seen in the last ten years, which is after, I think, Jeff, you got your information, with the census, um, in the last ten years, I've seen a, a big change in our neighborhood as well. And so, um, I am concerned about the, the short-term rentals, uh, I think we need a balance, and I was hoping that these proposed changes were not, uh, going to, to take away all the short-term rentals. What I thought I understood that they were trying to do was have no more five-year permits whereby the short-term rental owners could rent out every night if they wanted, uh, to a different family or a different person, which makes them really much more like a motel or a hotel in a residential zone. That, I thought, was a wonderful suggestion, because if you have people, different people coming every night or every few nights next door to you or across the street from you, it's a very different feeling to your neighborhood. And so I, I thought that was a very good suggestion, and I thought, still, people that did have their short-term rentals, the regular ones could still go on, but those hotel-like ones would be, they would be gone. I, I think that would really give, give back something to the community that we lost years ago, and I would really ask you all to take that seriously, that we have lost something, uh, by having these nightly rentals in the neighborhoods. So, I know people lose a lot of money, but I think there's something more important to our community than the money, and that's what I'm trying to say, if you could please consider that. I, I heard Linda Beck Sweeney talk about the fourteen-day rental, and my understanding was that, I thought that the change in the fourteen-day rentals to the twice a month was supposed to be helping you guys, because I've always heard you guys have thought, claiming that you didn't like that fourteen-day rental, because it was, it was...
Jan?
Okay, but now you do like it.
Jan? Direct, direct your comments to...
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay, so, if, if the short-term rental owners don't want that, then, I guess, I'm fine with leaving it as it is, just from me. I felt, I thought it was being proposed to help them, so, um, and the other one I thought was that the owners, uh, optioned that they deferred their penalties. I think, I think that's a very good suggestion, so, thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? Then that closes the public hearing portion of this, uh, request. So, um, of the, of the issues that we're supposed to address, one of the things that has bothered me, and I'm not sure why it came about, um, but I've never felt like a lottery system was fair to the people that are applying. And, um, I don't know if, if City Council will phase out the five-year terms or not, but to me, um, it's unfair, because if you're in the lottery, you may not in a five-year period be picked. So, to me, I think the, the procedure for issuing permits should not be a lottery system, it should be by dates of when the application was submitted to the city.
Just so, for Bill, I'm not here to prove that.
Oh, okay. Uh, you want me to repeat what I said?
No, I, I...
Oh, okay.
Just so Bill can hear the rest.
Okay. Well, no, that's, I mean, that, that's my big concern.
Thank you for your line, so, you know, it's just, I appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, so, you know, regardless of what City Council wants to, uh, to weigh in on, I, I just feel like the lottery system is, is not a good procedure to, uh, to be applied for these applications.
And one thing I'm not understanding from a lot of the people who spoke who are short-term renters is, it, it's almost as if the proposal is to get rid of short-term rentals, and no one is, no one is trying to do that.
Yes.
I mean, no.
There was, the, the point was made that they would be phased out over time.
No, no, just the five-year one, just the, the unlimited one that you get the five-year permit for, that's the only one. As far as all the other short-term rentals, anybody can apply for one and get it on any house. So I'm not understanding, what is the big deal? I mean, it, it, is the big deal the five, the lottery ones, which are...
That increases their revenue substantially.
Right, okay, so that's what's bothering people, but that seems to be, I mean, that seems to be causing a lot of the problems in the community, too, because the people who live on streets where there are these five-year lotteries are living essentially next to a hotel operating out of a residence. I mean, there's, what's the difference? None. And...
Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
I know, I, I know how many there are. I mean, I, this, I'm not, I'm, we're having a discussion. And so, it, is that what this is all about, really, essentially, is those thirty-seven permits? Because any one of those people who has the, you know, well, first of all, they're going to keep their five-year permit until they run out, so no one who has one now is going to be short-changed at all. They're still going to have them. So what's left then? The, the fourteen-day versus twice a month? And that seems to be, I, I don't, you know, I guess that me, I, I, it means two more rentals per year, that's the difference. the difference between doing it by fourteen days or, or twice a month. It gives you two more, that's it. So, is that what the concern is? Because everyone who's gotten up and spoken, who lives out of town and has a, a rental unit here, except for somebody with a property management company, are addressing this body as if we're trying to get rid of your fourteen-day, your, your rentals, and no one's trying to do that. And those of you who have the lottery, have won the lottery, will get to play it out for the five-year term. So...
Some people get to play it out for longer than that, because they, they last, until they sell the house.
You mean, the grandfathered?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the lifetime. So, I, that's what I'm just, I mean, I guess...
Can, can I take a...
You know, it's, it's like...
Can I take a, just a quick step back? It might help clarify some of it.
Yeah.
Bill, um, last, when we met and we, in a work session on this, um, we got off on a couple of different things, and you quickly steered us back to what the, the City Council had asked us to do. In, in looking, in considering what we've been asked to consider, do we need to keep that consideration narrowly to the direct request of the City Council? Or we, can we broaden it to, you know, this doesn't work, but this does, maybe coming up with our own version of, of something we feel is fair to people, or do we need to stay strictly to the three criteria that they asked us to consider?
Um, that's, that's a great question, and I wish, um, I had a more definitive answer to you, for you, which, which means, you know, they've given you, you know, a task, and, you know, certainly to the extent you think the task doesn't make sense or is gonna cause problems, that it seems like it's your response to saying, "We don't think that's gonna work, but here's what will work," makes sense. To the extent it's something unrelated, they can give you these three tasks to look at, and you say, "Well, here are our recommendations, those three tasks, but we thought you should have also considered this, and here's where I wanna go," that seems to be getting further appeal.
Yeah, and...
You know, there's kind of a spectrum as far as how related they are and what, what you can do.
And, and Bill, I, I would also say, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that what, what, what you're doing is, you can recommend anything, but what we're forwarding will be this ordinance draft, right? And so they can be, make recommendations to, alter that or change it or whatever, but if you go beyond kind of these main three points and a few technical things that might be included, then you would probably have to come back here and, with a new draft and, and be heard on those major kind of changes. Is that right, Bill?
I, I think that would be a, uh, yeah, that, that makes sense.
And do you, do you, just, can you, maybe you can answer this, Jeff. Why did they, why, why did the Council come up with this plan to begin with?
I think, Bill, Bill, I, I really, uh, I, I stated in my earlier that I had just heard that these were the three main points from Mark, that's what he told me that, and so, uh, mainly administrative and from concerns of this growth of the short-term rental. Now, Bill, and you were there all along, so you may have more to say.
Yeah, and I think, and I, I was not at the City Council work session when they came up with this list of three, uh, but I, my understanding was that that work session, Mark gave a much more comprehensive overview of, here's where the, here's where the, um, short-term rental program is at, here's some of the problems, here's the numbers that we have, um, you know, I, and, and I think the, the slides show that Jeff opened up the work session with, was taken from what Mark had prepared and presented to the City Council. And so the City Council heard the information that they got there, and that's how they selected the three parts of the program that they sent to the Planning Commission. Um, you know, how extensive that was, and whether it reached the same issues that you're hearing or, or discussing now, and whether they said, "That's not our, we're not concerned about that, we want to do X," or whether they didn't hear them all, because I wasn't at that, uh, City Council work session, I couldn't, I, I can tell you that.
And can you tell me how this meeting was advertised?
This one?
Uh-huh, this issue, coming up before the Planning Commission.
Yeah, we advertised, it's not a, like, uh, Bill says, an aqua judicial, so we don't, uh, we don't have to do a certain notice around the property or something, which is what a cons quod judicial has to do. So, we notify, uh, through the public, uh, post offices, we do it through the newspaper, and we do it, uh, we post it here, and then we also send it out to all, anyone who signed up through our short-term rental, uh, program, uh, anything else.
There's also a distribution list for many notices.
Yeah. That anyone signed up.
So, people who have short-term rentals would all have been, received a notification, but if somebody just lived in the community and had a job here, they may not have received, they wouldn't have received a letter in the mail informing them that there was this meeting. They would have had to come to City Hall or seen it in the, is it in the Gazette? You had it published in the Gazette, is that...
Yeah, or they, or, or you can, you know, just any legislative, in other words, that's why we recommend you sign up on through the website to get these kind of mailouts. So, you know, that's traditionally what's done in any place I've worked, that's how you do legislative. We can't send letters to everyone that's in City Council.
Oh, I understand that, right. I'm just curious, because I, I, I've just, I mean, you know, anecdotally, well, I'm not gonna go there, okay. It, there's a lot, anecdotally, there's a lot of people who live in the community, or citizens in the community, who are not happy with the whole short-term rental program. And, and so I'm just wondering if they really were aware that this was coming up. And that concerns me, and that's why I would definitely wanna keep this open, to give those people a chance to address the Planning Commission, even though I know it isn't the last chance they have to address it. It doesn't matter to me, because I'm not gonna participate in a recommendation unless I feel like everyone's had their say, I'm just not. So, but, that being said, I, I think that my personal opinion is, is that, uh, these recommendations actually make a lot of sense as they are now, and, um, and I think getting rid of the lottery is a great idea. And I, because I think it impacts neighborhoods very negatively, and I've heard anecdotally from so many people complaining about the situation of having their street just overrun with people they don't even know, so they don't feel like they live in a community anymore at all. I hear this all the time.
Maybe there's another way of, of directing this and being a little more focused. If there are areas of the city, uh, that have an inordinate number of short-term rental, or short, five-year, uh, unlimited rental permits, maybe the lottery ought to adjust for that, so that there's a mix of geographical, uh, limitations on the, the density of, of short-term, so that people don't feel like their street has just been inundated for one reason or another.
Yeah, that's an idea.
You know, and I, I think, you know, that's a, a fairer way of, of dealing with something that frankly, I think has worked really pretty well. But, um, I, I guess I don't, I live in Toluana area, but I guess I'm, I'm in an area that's sort of outside of the rental, because I don't feel that much rental pressure in it. Um, but I also think that, you know, when the city went to this lottery's program and went to limitations on short-term rentals, um, there was a, there was a huge argument in this little village about, uh, how this ought to be done, and, and, uh, some people probably weren't happy with the end result, but I was, I was, uh, pleased to see that it was not as extreme as some people thought should happen, and, and still allowed people to, to, uh, rent their houses out, or, or rooms out, or whatever, um, for extra cash.
But they still can't, whether there's a lottery or not. That's what I don't get. They just can't do it a different person every night, or every, you know, or three different people a week.
Well, they don't have the flexibility...
But they still can rent it out.
They don't, you know, if you have a fourteen-day limit or a monthly two tenant limits, um, they don't have the flexibility that the limited permit allows. Um, and there are a bunch of people who have those, and I think the lottery is probably the fairest way, rather than a first-come, first-served, you're on a list and you'll, you know, be six feet under, uh, before you ever, your, your ticket is ever pulled.
Lottery's all just luck, so is that fair?
Hey, over time, chances, chance all works out, you know, talk to the statistician.
Right, sure, over like four hundred years.
Seems like the, the opportunity would be to try to come up with a plan that would give everybody a little more opportunity somewhere between fourteen a day and a limited lot of, uh, I don't have to do that. But, you know, from what I've heard, most, you know, what I think, uh, most people are not making money off this, okay? Like you say, they're not covering their mortgages, and they're trying to cover the maintenance.
Right, and their tax.
And everything else. So, for a limited number of people, you win the lottery, and you have a period of five years where you're able to do that better and make more. Uh, you say, I'd rather see something in between that spread that, that extra out, so more people could come closer to covering their costs.
Well, it would mean even more congestion in the, in the residential areas. There would even be more people renting, and more cars, and more strangers next door to you, and more people on your street you've never seen before in your life, and it would be even less of a community than it is now. I mean, you know, I, I mean, I, you know, it's, is this a community, or, or are we...
Disneyland.
One big resort, you know? Like, like some, some records.
You know, one thing that hit me tonight, that I, and I'm split on this. I have neighbors and friends who have been next to short-term rentals that are not managed well, and it's been a nightmare for them, and I've heard from people about their, their terrible stories. But one thing that hit me tonight is, we appear to be in a transition on this right now, and we're just gaining new information, we have a new Director of Planning, and to be too drastic with any decision right now, I don't think would give us a chance to truly see the effect of having enforcement, which doesn't appear that we really had before. We have a new enforcement officer. Let's see if this can clean up some there. I mean, I assume the same parking, what's, what's the difference in the parking requirements between what was required before?
No, no change in the parking.
So, is the only difference gonna be enforcement, then? Okay, so that's a big change, right there. That's gonna, there's, you drive down these streets, it, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out some of these houses aren't gonna qualify. So, if we're enforcing only, if we begin enforcing now, and we can begin to see the effects of that, and then get some numbers that mean, you know, more than a few months, I think we set ourselves up to make a better decision than what we've been given by the Council and what we have today on this, so...
Yeah, because I, 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 I see, I see some, a lot of wisdom in that. For, for one thing is, I don't think the enforcement numbers that we were given are, are true enforcement numbers. I mean, I don't, I mean, as far as people who are cheating, I think there's way more people cheating than the numbers show in the city, because they haven't been caught. That's why nobody knows who they are. But you, I mean, I think anecdotally, again, you know, there are tons of people in this, we're using platforms like Airbnb, and nobody knows.
Well, and that's the other thing, is, you know, this is a platform that it sounds to me like was put in place in the nineties. It hasn't really been enforced. It's worked, and, and, you know, it hasn't been an issue until, you know, you've got a booming population in Portland, those people are, there's a lot of day trippers coming down here, parking on the streets, plugging up the, the streets, and it's frustrating for everybody, but I'm not sure that we can pin that on something that's been in place for thirty years. We have, we have now a system that might be able to come back around and give us some meaningful data so we can make a decision. And I'd like, I'd like more direction from the City Council on this. This is, as I look at it, I'm like, oh, fuck it. Um, so that, I, I don't know what that means in terms of any kind of a, a motion or anything, but it's just kinda my feeling. Sitting here tonight is, we need more information to make a good decision, or we're gonna sit with this for on and on and on. Um, just a couple of, I had just a couple administrative notes you had made, you had, um, helped me with one, which was the parking, which just seems, um, from my read, um, to be something that's gonna limit a number of these, a number of these properties when we actually start enforcing it. There, there is language in this, um, revised statute that talks about twelve in someplace, and to keep it, to keep it a residential use pursuant to the, to the state's building code, it does need to be under ten. I am very concerned about being over, or about, about it looking like a commercial use, even though to the neighbor, I'm sure it feels like a hotel, and, and I would feel like it, in some cases, I'm sure. But to stick only to the code and what's written, we should be under ten and all. Affordability has been something that's brought up a number of times tonight. I thought about that as well. I think the challenge we have as a community on affordability is, even if you can rent your house two times in a month, you're going to make more money doing that than you're going to rent it to someone locally who can't afford probably more than about a thousand dollars a month. When you, I mean, the rental rates are probably two hundred and fifty dollars a night. You not only would make more money, but you'd have access to your house. So, I think we have real issues in this town and across the state with affordability. Taking out the rental housing pool to make it more affordable, that's not gonna work. Um, and livability, I think, as we come back to it, it is not a one-sided conversation. It is about this balance of a tourist city with balancing the rights of those people who live here yearly. We have to consider that against the commercial viability of, of a tourist town like this. But that's, I don't know that that's the discussion for tonight. That's my opinion, anyway.
But it's relevant to this issue.
It's absolutely relevant, but I just, I feel like that we need a few more ish, I, some more inputs to, to be able to, to figure out what a fair balance is.
Well, I mean, I, I, I would make a motion that we continue this hearing.
Yeah, I mean, even though it is a legislative issue, I, I don't feel comfortable, since we've had requests to continue the meeting, I, I don't really feel comfortable, uh, bringing this to a close until, until this is carried out.
So, there's a motion on the table?
Yes.
I second the motion.
So, the motion is?
To continue this hearing.
Okay, call, roll.
Commissioner Bird?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Currie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Newlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattler?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Okay, um, we will hear from some of you again. Okay, the next item is the work session item on events and outdoor merchandising.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure what it is.
I think, other than the last one down here, about...
You know, but, I mean, as if we're trying to say, like...
Someone suggested, what is this about?
Here, and you charge another five dollars a night.
There's gotta be some kind of way to, you know, deal with leases, because I think a conservative...
All right, Jeff?
I put it in the work session, events and outdoor merchandising is a work session item, um, but really what it is, is to issue all the buy-in or permission or whatever, have a next work session. have a next work session, a next work session with the parks and community service, some committees to talk about events and outdoor merchandising. Because the parks and the community service may deal with these events, a lot of the events in town, and they're, and they deal with park spaces, sort of public spaces. And so I wanted them to be in a general discussion. And, and I, just, and working in other areas, I really feel if we get things together and they can, you guys can talk down what, you know, you, they have a different perspective than what you guys have. And so I spoke to them at their last meeting last week, and they said that they would be open to doing that. They would like to come to your, the next planning issue, you know, to come to our session.
Do you want that to be the first thing on the agenda?
I, I mean, I would like that, but you know, but just have.
Well, this will be on the agenda next time, too. And if there are people here who want to speak, I think, I don't think it's a good idea to make them sit here and wait through a whole work session before they get a chance to voice their opinion. Right.
Yeah, I'll try to control that.
You know, I've, I've worked where they have them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
And about a ticket.
A hook. Pull them off stage. It just, but I, I don't think it's a great idea to make people who are coming to testify wait until after a work session's over to do it. I think it's more fair to have a work session afterwards.
You know, I, I, I've got a sense that some of you guys were not wanting to move on with this at all. Others were wanting more input. I don't know where others, you know, came. So that's up to you guys to decide where you want to put in your agenda and hopefully they gotta come down to their, whatever the chief of.
I'll let you know.
The power's gone to your head.
Do you have a suggestion on how long the parks portion envision the discussion?
I like to keep everything to about twenty, fifteen, twenty minutes in a presentation format. So I'll try to pull together the issues, and then I would like fifteen, twenty minutes for you guys to come and talk together. So I say a forty-five minute window is about that.
And realistically, with this group and other groups I'm familiar with here, I think that the discussion period probably will go longer than that.
For, for you guys, written out.
Yeah, way longer.
Well, I mean, yeah, did not, if you would clock how long you discussed this, I mean, you didn't discuss.
Well, that's because we continued it. I mean, if we were going to really discuss it and come to a decision tonight, it would have gone on a lot longer.
I think we take a lot of time. If we're going to come up with something other than just a yes or a no on the free item, that's where we can come up with something that's more fair.
I, I'm getting pretty close to, you know, saying no before this continuous. But, but, you know, I think there are some compromises that can be developed that will.
So what, an hour for the work session?
What's that?
Hour for the work session?
At least.
Well, that's the whole thing. It's, it's a work session after an hour. You know, if you were to put that at the beginning, and you want to do it as the first thing, and you got to an hour, and you can call it quits, and we can reframe that.
Why not just put it at the end?
Well, I mean, my.
Either way, I'm just saying, it's not something, it's, it's another thing that you can, you can, we don't have to, it's not to get it done.
I mean, my, my general feeling is, we've, we've discussed this rental thing quite a lot. So I'm, I'm, I'm not thinking that it's going to take that much time in, in, in the next month. But, yeah, when you, when you're combining two committees, that could take a fair amount of time on a new topic. I think, I think you, I think you mentioned one time that you were not going to have two, two work session items on, on the same agenda.
Not two ordinances.
Two ordinances, okay. We have three.
You hit a gold star.
We have three issues on the, on the short term.
But one ordinance.
Now, now, that, that's going to get into my next point, though. If you guys, I'd like to, to ask you guys about those priorities that you're, that have to be hit on with defense.
The date priority?
Yeah, you know, I, I put it in your own packets, and I think it's there. She printed that off there. I'd like to give you that, that you guys are ready to talk about priorities. But I wanna, I do want to talk about the, this.
Before we do that, did we come to an agreement about what we're going to do with the next meeting? Are we going to have the public, well, shouldn't we finish that first?
You mean, you're not going to leave that up to me?
We're a committee.
Do you anticipate many other items? I mean, just general items coming up?
I don't think particularly. Yeah, we may have one or two. I think just one item.
Okay.
Could I, could I ask a question? What, when, when we're talking about parking enforcement, what are we enforcing?
For in the city?
Yeah, I understand, you know, I, I don't.
That wouldn't be a question to me. That's true, please. I don't, I don't do that. On short-term rentals, we.
Well, yeah, yeah, in terms of what you have on, on rental house. But, but in terms of, of parking enforcement, the police worry about the streets, and we don't have any, any concern about it. Council doesn't either.
They're, they're the city, right? And the police are the city. And so that's our enforcement mechanism for parking, right? I don't do that.
Has the city, has the city council given up on, I mean, last year they were talking about, you know, shuffling parking around downtown to find that, that extra half of the parking spot or something. And that's all, all of a sudden, that sort of dropped out of the ether.
It's not, I think it's still on there, things that if you were, they had a work session here shortly. I think they made them last week and we were for, where they looked at the priorities. And you could find that packet online, because it has a list, and it's still in there. That's one of the big concerns that have come in here. So hopefully, and that's kind of what I wanted to go clear with you guys on this, because your powers and your duties of the planning mission is to, and, you know, I don't prefer this. I don't prefer that you get from the council the direction on which you should determine the order. I think you guys can initiate your own changes. And you guys are the eyes and ears of planning and zoning, just as much as the city council for this. And so you have your authority as granted, and I can read that too, if you'd like, pulled up right here. You know, this is part of your powers and duties. And if you read that, powers and duties, and then you look at under the amendments section of the zoning code, that's the best that you've got to take that authority in that role as well, to say, we see these issues. And so I've listed here on this sheet, the ones that just since I've been here, that I get calls about all the time, and I know we're concerned. And so I, all I've done for the management, as we know, with the city council, tree removal, that's the city council, work tunnel, well, we're dealing with right now. Food truck, county records, and incident tables, the city council table that as an issue. But that's mainly because they want to deal with it through the events and outdoor merchandise. But that will be brought up. Then we've got affordable housing, which I don't know personally, it's up to Mike to decide worldwide. I mean, it's a concern. Transportation study, I think that's what Joe just, just mentioned. Yeah, that's another, and parking state, they kind of go hand in hand. Off-street parking, lot maintenance management. So that right there is, you guys are familiar that if you have a requirement, say here in a commercial district, you have a requirement right now that if you can't provide for the number of affordable, I mean, off-street parking spaces, then you can buy those lot spaces per year in the, in the, by giving a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year space.
In the parking lot?
For, for the park. So say, say, for instance, I'm open enough, let's just say, a retail business, and it requires, say, four parking use spaces. Well, if I can't find on my lot what to do with that, then I can say, I'm going to pay four times a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year of this parking fund. And then I can scale that business.
But is the parking, parking fund, what, what is that? What's that?
It's, it's just used to, currently, it's just a, a fund that collects to help pay off, or improve and maintain public parking in the city.
Oh, the lots that already exist?
Exactly. So I, I think that that is a big concern. And as we will find out with, as short-term rentals and other things, I think those are big issues. And a hundred and twenty-five dollars, I can tell you from going to a conference in Portland, two nights is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And we're charging an entire year. And so that's a conversation that can also even affect short-term rentals. So if, if I wanted a short-term rental, and I have one of these old cottages, and then you guys are telling me, well, you need to enforce that parking space, then the important thing is, if I were to go by the letter of the law and say you have to have that off-street parking on your site, this kind of fund can, is used elsewhere and could be used here. And also that way of mitigating what you guys keep saying we have a parking. Well, that's, that's how you take, take action.
Doesn't give you more parking spaces, though.
So I'm not saying this is a, that's what I want on, on our, on our priorities.
I thought, I thought the city had phased out that program.
No.
No?
And it's, it's still, yeah. And we'll have a couple coming up with planning mission you were saying on the DRD on that issue. So then the accessory dwelling language, which we might need a solid, at least technical team that I'm talking about, but if not, I hope they'll kind of look at that. Design review revision, so the design review ordinance is in the zoning ordinance. So you guys would also have a, that would probably be a joint kind of thing with the design review committee to approve that there. Marijuana zoning. Currently, the city just says any commercial one district can have marijuana. So some jurisdictions, zoning by geography, or certain, you know, number or certain areas. But it may be something we might want to address, art, you know, if we see a wrong number of these, are they weirdly we don't contribute? You know, that kind of stuff. Tsunami comp plan and zoning language, which has that from the economy and the state land. Both have given us some recommended guidelines for that. Your heart's going to do this right now. Natural hazards mitigation update, that's going to be coming through as well, probably a year from now. And then the plans list update, I've got some recommendations for that. And so there's a few things on here. I've given kind of minor recommendations of the timetable to deal with these. But I really just wanted to give these to you tonight, let you look at them. And then maybe next month, we talk about, does this priority, this time, that will look like what you guys, let you guys talk amongst yourselves about that.
Can I, can I bring up something totally unrelated?
Yeah, oh, that, no, that's, but also I was going to say, you remind me that if you have others that you think are important.
Oh, no, 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 not on.
Next month, I think we'll talk about.
Not on this list, just in general. Well, I'm curious, and I, I, and I think this started under Mark, I'm not, I'm not sure, that the planning, the city planner making recommendations. For example, tonight, when we had the discussion about short-term rentals, and you said basically, I don't see a problem, you know? And I, I'm curious about that. I mean, before any discussion even happens, before we've had a discussion, the audience hears it, and you're saying, well, I don't see a problem. And that sort of colors the whole, because then it's sort of like, if, if I personally disagree with you and think we do have a problem, then it's sort of like, that makes everyone who disagrees with you kind of an out, well, well, our, our city planner doesn't think there's a problem. And, and why, why does that person think there's a prob, you know? I just, I'm curious about it, because I, I don't know, I mean, maybe, you know, the city attorney can explain how that works. Because if for a while there, we didn't have that, and then they changed it, and then the city planner did during.
I remember Mark saying that his new boss wanted him to.
Right. His new boss told him he wanted him to, and that was not the Bruce, that was the guy before. What?
Whoever he was.
I remember him.
Yeah. Okay. But the, the before, the before Bruce guy is the what, is that what's his name?
No, Brent.
Brent, Brent, yes. See? So I, that, that was something Brent wanted, because before that, it didn't happen. And then, now, under Bruce, that, I mean, the ball is rolling, so it still happens. And I know you've been a planner in many other jurisdictions. I personally don't like it, because I think it colors the discussion, and I think that it, it, it sort of balances it in favor of whatever you say, because you are the city planner, you're the authority. Okay? You're the professional planner, whereas we are not.
That's the only reason I give that recommendation.
Right, but we're not professional planners.
As you're, I, I'm just going to say, you can take that, and I'll, I'll just say, and you'll, I hope that we'll chime in, that he can answer this. But I have worked in other jurisdictions as well, that no, did not give recommendations. I, as a practice, when it's up to me, my city manager might request that I don't do that, or the council might not propose it. But I, as, until I'm told not to, I, I like giving my summary of my, the information, because that's what I do. And so, and so I will give you that, and, but it's just another piece of information. And that's what I think you guys, you know, I, I highly recommend, that you always research, you know, all of these things. And I've seen evidence that tonight, a lot of you reached other sources for looking at these things. And that's the other thing that you'll see when I bring staff report to you in the future, I'm going to try to give you more and more information from other areas that do these things, so that you can compare different ways or different models for doing this, whether they're doing it this way. I came in the middle of this one, right? And so guys, this isn't a fair representation. I did not give kind of a written recommendation in the staff report, because Mark wrote that staff report. And I, and so this was my first opportunity to actually say that I just didn't see it from what I read and the materials I studied. And yes, the twenty, thirty years that I've worked in this industry.
But not in Cannon Beach, and not in the summer, so I just.
So way back, way back. I, I have worked in many rural communities, and so I do, can bring that to you. I'm not saying I like, right? Did I say I'm like? I didn't.
No, but I'm just saying that your opinion carries a lot of, it, it carries weight, especially when you have an open meeting where people are, you know, it's, it's not adversarial, but there are adversarial opinions, you know? They're different, they're opposite opinions. They tend to be at a lot of these things. And if the city planner is making his recommendation openly, then I, I just think, I, I think it's a bad idea. I don't like it. And, and I'm just telling you, and it's nothing, I mean, obviously nothing personal or anything. I didn't like it when Mark did it, when Mark started doing it. I really didn't like it then either, just because I think it. just because I think it colors the proceedings, because it, it's sort of like, a lot of people are, respond to authority. You are much more of an authority figure, just because you're a professional planner, who's hired by the city, than, than this body is, who are local citizens. And I don't, I just don't think it's a, I think it's a very poor practice. I, I didn't-
And if you're, with this, he just asked me to weigh, weigh in.
Sure.
Yeah, and, you know, I hear what you're saying, and, and what to keep in mind is that the city has hired Jeff to be a planner, and he does bring a, a wealth of experience from, uh, working in the, in the field for, for many years, and, you know, the way the system works in Oregon and elsewhere is that you do have, you know, when you have a matter that the planning commission is gonna discuss, you've gotta have something, a proposal to deal with it. And you hire Jeff to put that, craft that proposal to put in front of you, and hopefully what he puts in front of you is what he, um, believes is, is the appropriate thing for the city to do. It is entirely up to the planning commission and ultimately the city council, what they want to do in, in these matters. Um, you know, and talking legislative, quasi-municipal is slightly different. You know, you guys are the representatives of the people, and you get to decide what you're gonna do. But you hired Jeff for his expertise, and hopefully he can bring something to you. You know, in terms of, uh, making an authoritative recommendation, that's a general practice in my experience, is that, that's what planners do, is they, they make those recommendations. It's certainly not universal, and if they think you don't want that as a practice, that's, that's certainly something that cities should discuss. But also my experience with Cannon Beach is that, um, you know, there's been no shortage of any legislative proposals I've seen where there's been lots of people willing to push back against the, the planner. So they change the, the discussion, absolutely, but I, I think, you know, the, the people have seen, it hasn't stopped that discussion from happening.
I, I don't think it would stop it. I think it inhibits it, or puts a pall over it. I, I, I mean, I, I know that jurisdictions do it both ways, and we've done it both ways. And I like the old way better, when the planner didn't make an, a recommendation. That's, I'm just, that's my feeling on it, and I, and I explained why, and, um, that's it.
I, I question the timing of it. If, if you had given your, your presentation, we had listened to public input, we'd had a chance to discuss it, then you recommend-
You will have, I mean, you have it.
Right.
That's why I did it.
No, but she's saying you give yours after the discussion. She's, would prefer the timing be different.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Give my, uh, uh, you know, your-
Your recommendation.
Your recommendation after we've had a chance-
Discussion is closed.
Right.
Yeah, when we've gotten into planning discussion period, that's when the recommendation would have no influence on the audience.
Right.
But would, should, uh, you know, I'm-
Well, it all, it all depends on how you are-
Wouldn't you want their feedback on what I say when I'm trying to do that? That's, that's, that's what I, I, that's why it's fair to do it. I, it will be in your staff report when I write a staff report.
Sure.
The recommendation will be there.
That's fine.
And then they can respond to that, so that's why you don't put it to them. You want them to be able to respond to it.
I'd rather they responded to the facts that you present, or the issue that you present, not your- No, you have a recommendation, and that's different than just a, a body of facts and information, supplying as much information. You did a fantastic job of supplying information tonight. You did. And I, and I was glad to hear it, and then, except for your colors were wrong on the chart. But then, you, you made a recommendation.
Do you want to hear kind of the devil's advocate of this, our discussion, my opinion?
Sure.
Because I'm a citizen, so what would stop me and guilty you responding as, God, emphasis hilarious, is that I can give you all the facts you want, data you want, and then you guys can do, and no recommendation, and I just step over that mic as a citizen, which I am, and tell you my recommendation. What difference would that make? And what would stop me from doing it?
I think it's a conflict of interest, is what would stop you.
Yeah, it's kind of a conflict, but, but you would be stepping into the role of an advocate as soon as you stepped behind that mic.
Well, out of curiosity, when I first came to this meeting, my first meeting last time, on the, um, what was the, the setback, what was the name of the applicant? The setback production. He made a recommendation there. I mean, that, it's kind of the same thing. Before anybody had ever said a word, it's, I'm, I'm used to planners doing that, making those recommendations and having an opinion. It's our job as, as citizens to, to thump them if we don't agree. But, I, there, there was a recommendation there. If we have hired someone who is an authority, it's his job to, to give us an opinion, because we're not experts in that field. And if we disagree, whether it's because of our own personal experience, then we shut him down, but that's not-
What if he'd given us a recommendation on the doon, on, on shaving down the doons?
I wish Mark Barnes would have.
Oh, I'm glad he didn't, because that would have, that would have changed-
I would have felt better about, I would have felt better about the whole process if he had an opinion. I just, I just didn't think-
I'm sure he does have an opinion.
But I never knew what it was.
You know, but I don't think that's his job.
As a professional, I would have expected it from him. I was disappointed in him for no opinion.
I wasn't, I was glad, and I, and I like, and I was-
Can we take a vote on this right now?
Yeah.
Well, we did it the other way before. We did, and, and I just thought that was a benefit.
Well, I, I think that stepping into a middle of somebody else's work-
Right.
Is, is a difficult place to be, especially if you're looking at the facts underlying the, the question, you know, before the committee, the commission. I think it's really difficult if you don't see the facts that the person who, you know, developed the policy, uh, developed, uh, I think partially, and this is sort of the undiscussed aspect of this proposal, uh, with three months of people beating on their chests in the, in the city council, uh, about, uh, the need for affordable housing, or workplace housing, or whatever, you know, definition we wanted to put on it. And the city council was by God going to do something about this issue, because it was important to the community, and, and the business community too. And I think we have a proposal that, that try, is, is a last-ditch attempt to do something about, about housing in town.
Thank you for saying it, because I was, I'm lost on, on the logic behind this. I mean, I think there are some issues.
I, well, it, you know, it was a, it was all over the Gazette and, and kind of the, you know, chatter around town about, and, well, the chatter up and down the coast, and, you know, various city groups were getting together and, and dealing with it, and, and, you know, one thing after another would be knocked down, because it wasn't possible, there's no land, there's no this, there's no that. And what can we do? Well, maybe we can force some of these rentals into permanent housing. And I think that's what, that's, I think, what we have in front of us.
Okay, can I stop this from getting into discussion? Matter fully charged, because we're close to that.
True.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I-
But I, but my point is, you know, that the facts that you, you know, presented tonight may not have been the facts, uh, uh, that, that caused this proposal to come forward. And I appreciated hearing, you know, actual numbers, which is something I hadn't heard in this argument in a long time.
No, I thought your presentation was excellent, and I appreciated knowing the data and the feeling that we were at eleven percent. Gives me a hope, that we can vote on this and come up with something that the community can live with too.
I feel a little different than Lisa, that I, uh, you know, I appreciate your opinion as a professional. Doesn't mean I buy it every time.
I'm not saying I don't appreciate it.
But it's probably what we're paying for here.
I, I'm not saying I don't appreciate your opinion. Obviously, I do. It's not that. It's just I don't like the, that it be presented in front of the open, before the discussion to color, I think to color the discussion. That is my point here. That's all.
And that's what I tried to say with timing.
Right. It's like, you know, a veto before the legislature even-
Logically, really the only place they could put it, though, is in the, the document that you present, at the end of the document saying, "Here's my, my recommendation."
That's, that's how it's traditionally done, that's how, uh, I would do it.
And it, it doesn't have to be your opinion, it could be the staff opinion.
Right.
It is.
He's the only-
But you talk to yourself.
No, but, but, you know, in some issues that we end up dealing with, you know, the fire, you know, involved, the police are involved, you know?
And we definitely will, you know, probably, probably work in that.
Right.
Well, I think we need to wrap this up.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to know whether or not we're going to concentrate on the three questions that the city council has, three sections that the city council has proposed, or if we're going to totally broaden that to other issues or other considerations.
We should be, we should tailor it to those three items.
Specific areas.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, we also might want to give the city council some reasons for, for our reaction.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. I recommend, yeah, whatever you come up with, just please, yeah, fill in what the weapon is.
Okay, so are, are we going to do the schedule for the coming year at the next meeting?
Yeah, I, I, I want you guys to at least look at this, and then, except for you guys, if you want to do it tonight, but I, you know, I'm fine with doing it next week, I mean, next month, but I run out of time.
I'm, 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 yeah, I'm fine with passing it on. Okay, um, then is there anything else? We're good to the order.
Well, in terms of doing a schedule, um, yeah, it's, it's pretty hard to say, like, this meeting, we're going to be dealing with this issue, when at that meeting, we might be backed up with God knows how many people wanting to have two-foot setbacks, have their house setback on the next door neighbor's yard. So, I mean, I think, yeah, we can sort of set out a, a goal, but I don't think, I don't think we can attach each item to one of our, our meeting dates.
Well, one of my goals is that, you know, I, I think, and I'm a, I'm a data person, actually, you know, and you gotta see, they're gonna get more information. And the reason a lot of the data I'm hoping to serve is that we've got some big decisions to make. If you really want affordable workplace housing, if you want to solve parking issues, if you want to do these things, you're going to have to change your policies. You're not gonna get these things done, and not gonna affect change unless you start, start directing the rules back and start doing a better job at what we do. And I firmly believe that. I agree that you want all the participation you can get, that there are, you're instructed to do certain things by your ordinance, and, and, you know, I think that a lot of, some of these issues can be resolved with ordinance changes. And if you're not getting, turning through them and getting to them, you're just pushing off the issue. And that is what I worry about, and I listened to a bunch of audios of meetings at planning, VRV, and council hiring, accepting this job, and-
And you still took it?
I still took it, because I know we got, there's a lot that we can do. And I, and I know we've got good people here and people that really care, but there are not too many jurisdictions that really we can, you know, that can give twenty minutes to someone to give something that they've already written in the letter, okay? Three minutes, give me what you got in three minutes, and then we'll move on.
I'm all for that.
Yeah.
I think I'd agree.
Those kind of things are big, because you've got to get through these things. If you want to achieve what you want to achieve, from what I hear, priorities and all these things that I go to, week after week with the council, and you've got, they've got a long, laundry list of what they want to do. But if they're gonna do it, they've gotta make effective use of these.
I think that's a great idea. I, uh, another piece of new business that I told you tonight, that, that on Monday, I think it's Monday, the, the Oregon State Legislature is going to, there's a bill before them to completely disallow any regulation of vacation rental dwellings in the state of Oregon. That's been proposed, there's legislation that's been proposed, and they're asking, is for letters from people, saying, you know, in other, it's a property rights type thing. It's my house, I can rent it to whoever I want, whenever I want, however I want, and, you know, through the community, I mean, basically, you know? So that's gonna be in front of the legislature, uh, this coming week. So hopefully, it will not pass.
Maybe a little research and campaign contributions would be interesting.
Would be interesting.
Okay. Nothing more, we're adjourned.
I'm gonna smack your gavel.
Thank you, Bill, God. Only one serious.
That's his weightlifting program.
This is, this is my protection.
A three fifty seven bag?
Yeah, 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 that would, that'd be much better.